As a preliminary matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Ronald Brooks.
Present.
Duarkash Nalan.
Present.
Todd Karina is on vacation, and I don't know if Sierra is joining via... When Sierra is sick. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Planner Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressy.
Present.
Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, August 9, 2022, now called order at 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, and extended to June, on June 16, 2021. For this meeting, the planning board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121, and enter access code 133-747-477. For the public to join via computer, head to goToMeeting.com backslash join backslash 133-747-477. Remote access information as the posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording this meeting? Any none? Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the... I already said that. Accordingly, those members of the planning board, employees and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in the sweep and clap.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic of the states and our nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and infinite.
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for the effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line with the members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. The microphone will be over there at the podium. I'd like to remind the audience, applicants and town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda is A&R Plan from Nathan Campanello, 219 Prospect Street. Is anyone here representing Nathan? Please go to the podium.
Evening, Nathan Campanello.
Is that mic on, Rich?
Hello?
There it is.
Good evening, Nathan Campanello.
And you want to subdivide your lot?
That is correct, sir.
Two on Prospect Street and one on Eddie Street?
That's correct, sir.
I'm having problems in listening to the audio period. I may quit very shortly.
Anybody that's participating remotely from the computer, please turn off your microphone until you are called upon to speak. Thank you very much. Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this? None? Duarkash, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Why? You have any questions?
No.
Neither do I. May I have a motion to approve this A&R plan as presented?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
I, myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. Yep, we gotta sign that.
Thank you very much.
I need this one. Give it to me. This was the Myla, right?
Well, Myla's the last one. He should have told Penn for all of them.
Adam?
Say it again. That's right. That's right.
I need to take the others. That's the Myla cap.
Is there something happening else running?
This is the top.
Same thing. Charlie, you had a comment just to make sure that they're not going to survive until I go through what I have for a subject. They're still on subject.
They're serious.
Questions, though? Just something you want to add?
I didn't know. You could tell I'm a shoe right from the door.
Check my answer.
Oh, sure, huh? No time for that. It would be on the other one. That's it. It's a service. Next on our agenda, 17th applicant Richard Akala. I hope I said that right. Requesting site plan approval under section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for church at 188 Oxford Street North, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 17, parcel 221, 11. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkash?
Aye.
I, John Regan, myself, is an aye. It is a vote. Is there anyone here representing the applicants? Is no one here representing this for the church at 188 Oxford Street?
I'm turning it off. It is very useless listening to the on-line.
If you're trying to talk online, we can't hear you. Can you speak a little clearer? Are you representing the church?
Let me just continue it.
We can't continue it, yeah?
Okay, seeing as no one here representing this parcel of land, may I have a motion to continue it?
I'll make a motion to...
I'll come down and we can drive over which we're supposed to be.
What did he say?
We can't hear you. Can you speak a little clearer, louder?
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
John.
Who goes? Okay, sure. You have to go to the microphone, please.
I live next door to the church. They've already started...
Right-hand side?
What's that?
On the right-hand side?
Yeah. They've already started doing work over there. They tore off that job off the back of that building. The asbestos siding has still been laying on the ground since last of June. So I have a nine-year-old that still plays in the backyard. There's asbestos siding on the ground. There's chunks of it laying everywhere. Is this ever going to get cleaned up, fixed up? Or to what level do I go to the state next because I've called the town twice?
I believe that would be a complaint to the Auburn Health, Board of Health and the Taylor, if I got mistaken.
Yeah, I've called them twice already.
You passed. You called them twice?
Yes.
And no one's come out to take a look at it?
Still been sitting. It's been sitting there for a month now.
Are you sure the siding is asbestos, or...?
Oh, 100%.
Anybody test it? Has to be tested.
I'm legally not liable to test it, but I had Oxford D. letting. They came out and looked at it and said it's asbestos siding.
Not that I didn't believe you.
No, it's... But I tried buying the building. That's also why I know.
Right. So we can pass that, your concerns, along to Taylor Moody again, and to Darlene and to the Board of Health and see if you can get something done for it.
I also have one more question. Is what are they doing about parking for over there? Except if they want to make that a church?
That is going to be...
Part of their land?
Yeah, it's going to be... Do you remember the previous church that was going to go there?
Yep.
It's the same. It's the same thing.
But they're... How is that possible that this church doesn't own the land? They're renting it off another church. Is that how business is going to be run around here? That if I don't own the land, I can use somebody else's for parking? Because at some point, what happens if they sell that building to condos like they tried 10 years ago? They lose their parking? Or how is that going to work?
Well, that's an agreement between... I think they have to buy the church in order to have it. Because that's the first go-around. They have to buy the church. And then some of the land in back is theirs, but the biggest part of the parking is owned by St. Joe's.
Correct.
They were going to give them permission or let them lease it?
Yep.
So if they ever left the building and closed the church, now it just revert back to St. Joe's, I would think.
What happens if St. Joe's decides to sell like they did 10 years ago? They wanted to build low-income housing over there. They were going to sell it. So if they change at the condos late in the future, what happens with this church's parking?
Got to be part of the sale of the building and the lot, I would imagine.
So it's a change in use to any of the site plan?
Right. It would be a change of use. So they have to go through the whole site plan review, everything. It's got to go peer review, everything.
Okay.
If that's what they wanted to do. I can't foresee St. Joe's wanting to sell that rectory again, but you never know.
Exactly. They've...
You never know.
They've talked about it a few times. Okay.
Like I said, we can pass your concerns along to the Board of Health and to the Building Commissioner. See if we get somebody out there to look at it and, of course, have them clean that up. Your main concern is the asbestos shingles, right?
Correct.
Yeah, they're the old cement-looking ones?
Oh, yeah.
Lot of fiber in it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is argument continued.
I made that motion, right?
Yep.
What?
Okay. May I have a motion to continue the hearing for 188 Oxford Street?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Duarkash?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Brendan Greeley requesting site plan approval under 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for garage to site improvements to be constructed in an existing commercial business at 4 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 28, parcel 3. Is there anyone representing Brendan Greeley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Dominic Rinaldi, DSC group, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
I apologize. I have some dice at night and not at home. So hopefully it supports on your...
You don't open the hearing. Open the hearing.
Oh.
To construct a...
Hang on just a second. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. Please continue, Mr. Rinaldi.
Sure, absolutely. Sorry about that. So I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Architectural Fireplace would like to construct a one-story pre-stab metal bay garage on their existing facility at 4 Washington. The currently existing property is used as a forum and district center for architectural fireplaces for their fireplace products. And unfortunately, they have had the bad of having some break-ins and vandalism to their three trucks that they keep right overnight, and they would like to be able to park them in a locked facility to protect against that. With, as I said, a single-story, pre-persecuted metal garage on a concrete slab that'll be built a little to the southeast of the existing facility, mostly in what is currently grass, a little bit on existing pavement as part of this work to offset the increase of the biggest stormwater runoff, we're proposing a small infiltrating bio-retention area in the existing grass.
This is going out for peer review, I believe, and those will be discussed at the next planning board meeting. But one of the things I saw is you have two water lines going right through the new building. Existing water lines.
Yeah, so we're going to do a little work to figure out if those are exactly there. We're not sure. Those are based on record plans. And this would be a slab of great foundation, so it's not... Those water lines structurally could actually stay there.
That'd be up to the town water department and DPW.
Yeah, and I know we got some comments from the building department, but we didn't get any comments from any other town departments yet. And this afternoon, as you mentioned, it did go out for peer review, and I did get peer review comments this afternoon. Obviously, you get... Else night unless you really wanted to.
Well, there was...
We could try.
There were some comments from the Auburn Fire and Rescue Department. No information has been provided to confirm that the turning criteria used on the submitted fire truck turning movement drawing, civil drawing 2345,000 LM is identical to the Auburn Fire and Rescue Department apparatus. The provided fire department access road does not comply with the requirements of 527 CMR 1.0, Chapter 18, Fire Department Access and Water Supply. The inside turning radius from the site onto Arnold Road is less than the required 25 feet, and the fire apparatus use of the opposing lane and the design of the fire department access road is prohibited for 527 CMR 1.0, 18.2.3.4.8. So you did hear from the fire department. Or it should have been...
Yeah, I thought... Yeah, but we're trying to reach out to the fire department, discuss those. We... A lot of those are actually tied to the terms on Arnold Road and the access behind the building are all conditions that have been there for a long time that we're not changing.
I understand that. But like I said, this will have to be continued until the next meeting, so we can get our peer review in, we get to read it and get it forwarded back to you, so you can address the peer review comments. You know the routine.
Yeah, I know. I assume that's the peer review today, but that would be the case.
I'm sure they have some comments. I doubt if it's going to be a ton of comments because it's a small site. It's a fairly small building.
Yep. Yeah, it's not a long water.
No, just for a couple of trucks, right?
Yeah.
That's all we're going to do. All right, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue.
All the comments first.
All the comments on this? Being none may have a motion.
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is the peer review being done on the existing site plan, or would they update the site plan and then send it out for peer review?
This plan was sent to the peer reviewer.
Okay.
Peer reviewer makes their comments.
Yeah.
They send those comments back to Mr. Rinaldi, the...
And then he's going to...
DSC group. And then he gets to address them, and then peer review guy...
Okay.
Make sure he gets everything checked off.
Okay.
Look back and forth a couple of times.
Sounds good.
So may I have a motion to continue this till our next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Duarkash?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is... At 7:10 is applicant Mira Company Incorporated requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.6.4, contractors yard of the Auburn zoning bylaws for a warehouse with office space, outside storage, and site improvements to be constructed at 3 Commerce Drive, Lot 2, Auburn, Mass. 01501, map 34, parcel 37. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is a vote. So I assume you're representing...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering. With me here this evening is Travis Brown from Turning Point Engineering, Mr. Dan DeValle, General Manager of Mira and his associate Tony Bonafano in operations with Mira, a local, kind of a local representative for the region.
I don't know how local they are. They're out of Georgetown.
Yeah, exactly.
Moving far away from home.
Yeah, Mr. DeValle made quite a long drive to get here, so we'll make good use of his time. So, thank you. This is a site plan application for Lot 2 in the Auburn Commerce Park subdivision. Mira has this lot under agreement from the subdivision developer.
Eastern Partners.
Correct, Eastern Partners. And we've worked closely with Mira to meet their specifications for their needs and their operational needs of the site plan. And maybe before I do that, I'd ask Mr. DeValle to talk a little bit about what Mira does for those who don't know. I know you probably know, Mr. Chairman, but for those who don't know, if... Quick overview?
Absolutely.
Great.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Mira Company is a utility contractor supporting public and private utility construction. We're based out of Georgetown. We have some satellite yards that we've rented property, but this will be our first step. We're a 69-year-old company, and we'd love to celebrate our 70th next year in Auburn if we could. We have a significant operation that's based here in Worcester, supporting electric. We also support gas and fiber optic construction. So type of work that we do is 724, but the nature of off-hours is generally emergency work, call-out, special support, storm damage, trouble jobs, if you will. About 250 employees, fairly well-respected in the industry, I hope. And we've done a lot of poking around, and we really like this location, and we're excited about, as I said, the possibility of our first satellite operation with our own facility that would support these operations. Essentially, it's a construction yard with storage and a small office space with some warehouse.
What kind of storage? Is it all going to be in the warehouse? Or is it going to be stored out there on the lot?
It would be inside and outside storage. Typically, the outside storage would be more along the line of like PVC pipe, pre-cast concrete, those types of things to support the utility work. And then on the lock and key inside the building would be more valuable technology that would be weather protective and...
Does anyone from the audience have any questions regarding this project? Any none? Anybody on the board?
Would you have motor vehicles or anything stored outside?
Yes, sir. That would be... We would have heavy equipment, dump trucks, backhoes that would be staged in this location.
Yes. Oh, we have such a large warehouse. Is there going to be any equipment repair in that warehouse? I mean, if you got a broken-down machine, you're not going to take it all the way back to Georgetown.
There would be. It would be a maintenance facility as well.
Okay, so I believe you have it, but that would require an oil-water separator for your lot?
Yes, correct. Yeah, if it's a floor drain and it's because the drive-in and drive-through, then yeah, the building plans will incorporate an oil-water separator and DC trap.
Right, is this...
In the outside storage area?
Outside storage area.
Where the trucks and backhoes and all of that will be packed?
Yeah.
Oil and water separators out there?
That's correct. Yep. So this site, the stormwater system for this site was designed to meet the stormwater management standard for a luple, land used with higher potential pollutant loads. So, you know, there's an element of outdoor storage and fleet vehicle storage that we think pushes us over that threshold, so it was designed to meet that higher standard.
So I'm assuming that the entire area is going to be paved?
Yes.
At least 90% of it?
So what... Give you that... Yeah, so the... This is the limit of the paving. Quickly highlight it here.
Yep.
Site access comes with a public sack of the subdivision. A lot goes all the way out to the boundary here, a lot of agents and weapons, 25 foot off where they're staying away from to comply with the conservation duty policy. At the request of DPW, we didn't take away some paving that went to a point we just thought was a little excessive, so we kind of chopped it off. We appreciate that. This area in the back, by the hill, by the stream line, will be fenced with security. Working inside this fence that needs to be kept secure will be gumso. Gumso.
Chain link? Chain link fence?
Chain link fence with gates, correct. Did provide a detailed lighting plan. One of the comments we, we received from the Auburn Police Chief was about security and lighting. I talked to Mr. DeValle, security is, is a top priority, there will be a security camera system in conjunction with the, with the lighting that's provided on the, in the site plan.
None of the lighting is gonna go beyond.
The lighting goes beyond the property, correct, yep. And the, the photometric planning included illustrates that. Uh, a little bit more about their operation. So although Mr. DeValle indicated, uh, a number of two, you know, two hundred and fifty employees, the satellite location is, is not quite that big. They have about, yeah, they have about six crews, um, and every crew has a foreman. The foreman is the only, uh, person that comes to the site. He has his company, company vehicle, so he drives a company vehicle, comes to the site, gets what he needs. If he has to hook up a trailer with a backhoe, you know, hook up a generator, you know, that he toes, he comes and gets it, some other materials, some pipes, some fittings, some elbows, some cable, takes it to the job site where he meets the rest of his crew. Uh, so there's about six of those crews, six foremen. There's four to five office employees that'll occupy the office space and then, uh, there'll be two mechanics, uh, employed in the warehouse space, you know, you know, ready to service, anything that needs service, whether it's a, you know, a backhoe or, you know, maybe it's a company vehicle, a company truck, any sort of equipment that, uh, you know, a bobcat, things of that nature that the company owns and operates as part of their operation. So we provided thirty-four parking spaces, which we feel meets the, uh, the criteria in the, uh, in the planning board regulations, which is based on square footage of office, square footage of warehouse, and then up to, uh, the number of employees on the larger shift, which we said were ten. Uh, so the, the foreman will show up, uh, in the morning, it's, uh, six-thirty. They'll be on-site for about a half an hour gathering their things and then they leave. And they only really come back if they have to get a couple more supplies, uh, but, you know, hopefully not, that, you know, it's not efficient use of their time. The office and mechanics will arrive at seven and they'll work till three-thirty. Um, there's not a lot of coming and going during the day, it's not a distribution facility where there's trucks coming and going. There's not a lot of visitors to the site, uh, according to, you know, Dan and, and his staff.
Your salesman.
They'll be like, you know, like a vendor, there'll be someone who probably wants to come and sell them their pipe, you know, so the vendor will come and make a sales pitch, you know, uh, maybe they'll have a little corporate meeting every, you know, every six months where, you know, four or five of, you know, managers come to the site, but my day-to-day basis, you know, fairly small satellite operation, but, uh, you know, something that they'll be proud to call home, away from home.
Fellow managers said they're gonna have dump trucks there as well. Where do those guys park?
The dump trucks?
Not the dump trucks, people driving them.
Yeah, well, if.
Has a pickup pulling a trailer, he needs a triaxle or a six-wheeler, somebody else gotta come drive it, so they gotta park somebody, so it's gonna be in the lot.
Yeah, so he may park in the lot. So with thirty-four spaces, we accounted for, you know, about, you know, those foremen, not all, you know, they won't all ha- have dump trucks or need to take a dump truck, but, but say half of them or four, four out of the six needs to take a dump truck that day, you know, for a triaxle.
I know the way they work and most of the utility guys, once the dump truck is out on-site, it stays out there, they give a guy ride back to get his car.
You got it. Yeah, exactly. You've always been, you've always had a lot of common sense about these sorts of things, it's nice.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Yeah, I had a few questions.
Right, right, Rakesh?
Um, one is, I think the, um, so from the site plan itself, is there a second driveway that goes to Route twenty?
Yeah, so as part of the subdivision, right, here's the cul-de-sac. Uh, this is an emergency access drive that goes all the way to the front of the development. The development currently proposed for lot one, we did come to development coordination group meeting, and that emergency access drive is actually gonna tie into the proposed development on lot one, the fire chief was happy about that. But the driveway portion of this emergency access road is twenty-four feet wide. When you get past the opening for Mira's, uh, site entrance, it meets the fire department access road requirements of twenty feet. It's all paved, twenty-four feet for the driveway portion for Mira and twenty feet for the emergency access portion.
Okay, okay.
And the, there will be a gate here after the Mira driveway, because that's, that's not a day-to-day use driveway, it's just for emergency access, so it'll be an emergency breakaway style gate. And that was on the subdivision plan.
Steve, if you look at that, that inland bank, right, so in the map on the northern, so from the cul-de-sac, yeah.
It's true.
There's to the top one, yeah, so that, on the map, it shows twenty feet wide, is that okay? Is that okay with the fire department?
This is twenty-four.
Sure, okay, on the map, I, wh- why am I seeing it as twenty feet, or is that wrong? The shaded portion there? Yeah, you're right there, where. Okay.
And then this is twenty.
Okay, okay. And then on the, um, that's helpful, Steve, um, on the, the materials, the storage itself, um, there's no chemicals that'll be stored on-site? It'll just be, um.
Oil.
Just oil, maybe?
Yeah, you could drive by their facility now on Route twenty in Western near Kamasi, uh, Landscape Supply, and you could see through their fence the type of materials they store. It's, it's a lot of, a lot of plastic pipe, conduit, fittings, elbows, uh, there are some reels of wire.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, no, no chemicals.
Okay. And then, um, on the, on the number of trips, is there, uh, did you guys do a, a traffic study? Is there an impact on that, on the, you know, on the traffic coming out of the area?
So we did it, the traffic study we provided with the subdivision assumed that this use would be more intense.
Okay.
Um, so what I can do is I can get, I can kind of resubmit that traffic study, if that's helpful, to show you that a more intense use that was as- assumed here as part of the subdivision, because it was a twenty thousand square foot manufacturing building, uh, that was assumed as part of the subdivision approval.
Okay.
Uh, and this is much less intense than that. So I could, I could provide you kind of a summary of those figures, if that would be helpful. I didn't think a traffic study, another traffic study, um, was necessary given the, you know, the, the fact that we had, uh, you know, we had one for Ross Trucking, we had one for the entire subdivision, so.
Okay, that's right, that's, yeah, it's a, it's essentially going to be an add-on to that, so you, you will not, will not expect any additional traffic flow.
Correct, yeah, in fact, less than assumed during subdivision approval.
Yeah, you're gonna be, it's gonna be like once out, once in in the morning, once out, once in at night.
Yeah, exactly, less than a single family house.
Back and forth like Ross and Chris.
Yeah, yes, definitely.
Okay.
Any questions? My question is, where you say inland bank, it looks like it's a box culvert, the way it's drawn.
Yeah, so the inland bank is a reference to the existing conditions that that part of the wetland system, that's classified as an inland bank, there's no, there's no bordering vegetated wetland there, that portion of the wetland only has some stream bank, because it's not a coastal bank, it's an inland bank, so it's a stream bank. And that's, that's an existing condition, you would have seen that on the subdivision plans as well. So that box culvert that is, that is shown on these plans, it's actually built, because that was part of the subdivision emergency access road.
Next one, forward down the page.
Yeah, and this one too, they're both built.
Already built, okay.
Yep, they're both built, uh, ready for, ready for paving, uh, meet, oh, you know, part of the conservation approval for the subdivision road as well.
Have you been before the Conservation Commission yet?
Tomorrow night.
All right.
And the DEP issued, uh, a file number, uh, with a few minor comments and, uh, so.
And, well, you're gonna draw on Route twenty from Commerce Drive, so you don't need a curb cut.
Correct.
Didn't have a lot of notes on these.
John and Adam, I have one question. Is there, do we need a peer review for this one?
Yes, this has been sent out.
Has it been sent out already?
Yeah, yep, I spoke with Jeff Walsh at the end of last week and, uh, he was expecting it to maybe arrive in the mail that day or the next day. So peer rev- peer review is underway?
Yeah, well, you should be getting it back anytime it hasn't been forwarded to yet and, as we discussed earlier, you gotta address all the things that goes back to the peer reviewer. He says rather than, you met the requirements of the peer review, and we go on from there.
And, uh, with a little extra time, because you're just on the meeting schedule between now and your next meeting, we would expect to have some back and forth and.
Oh, sure.
Come back with everything resolved.
I'm sure. Uh, does anyone else have any question? Anybody from the audience have any question regarding this? If there being none, may I have a motion to continue to our next meeting?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye, it is a vote. Frankly, see you the next meeting where everything will be.
We'll be here, thanks so much, yep.
Have a good one. Next on the, uh, agenda for the seven fifteen is applicant for four sixty Southbridge Street LLC requesting site plan approval under section three point two point five point one five of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a motorcycle dealership and repair shop at an existing commercial site. May I have a motion to open the hearing?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Rakesh?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. The meeting is now open, is there anyone here representing four sixty, oh, there you go, Southbridge Street. Okay, would you, uh, like to make a quick presentation?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm Robert Delgaria, an outland engineering, we're here representing Mr. Wagner. We've applied to the planning board, uh, we had, because Mr. Wagner would like to put a motorcycle dealership in the, uh, building at four sixty-eight Southbridge Street, uh, currently that's the TD Bank and the Ready.
Ready Med, yep.
That's about half the building, the building, it's total twenty-five thousand square feet, uh, half of it's rented out at this time with those two units. This, the remaining sixteen thousand square feet, he wants to put the motorcycle dealership in there. Uh, so as required, uh, the use requires us to file with the planning board for a site plan approval.
Yeah, it's working. So, in your application, like you said, it's gonna be a motorcycle dealership, does that mean there's gonna be motorcycles outside in the parking lot? Like Sheldon's does?
Sure, well, um, again, we're, we're in Worcester now, we're over on Plantation Street, so, uh, majority of our business is inside, I mean, being motorcycles, being in New England, so we're, we're designing a service drive that's inside, so we are, and again, for security, uh, you know, we like to bring everything inside, have everything locked up, so we, we are gonna use all the interior space for our display. Uh, we probably would have some, couple parking spots for, you know, just a new bike display, but those would just be the, you know, the everyday parking spots that are, that are there and paved.
I assume there's gonna be motorcycle repair at this shop?
Yes, exactly.
Painting if necessary and.
Uh, again, we've been dealing with New England for so many years in Worcester, you know, we're trying to create a, um, an environment that would bring the bikes in, uh, for service write-up and parking and everything, so we've worked on that.
So if you have repair and painting, you have to put in an oil-water separator? That's public health's gonna require a DPW state everybody. So just go for fair hearing. So do you know where the oil-water separator would go, how it would tie into the sewer? Because right now, the sewer runs off the, the west side roughly?
Yeah, in the loading dock area.
Pardon me?
In the loading dock area.
Yeah, the, uh, the loading dock isn't flagged out, so I don't know where that would be, is that right behind Ready Med or is it to the right of Ready Med?
Right here. So it's, it's near.
Right. Yeah, I gotta go to the mic.
Apologize.
There you go. So you're not gonna repave anything out there, you're not changing the, any of the exterior really, other than maybe the oil-water separator?
Well, there, uh, there was a, a reply from the police chief and he's looking for some, uh, additional.
Move the mic close to your mouth.
I'm very sorry, again, it's second meeting in three years. Um, uh, the police chief wants some exterior lighting, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna provide that, we're gonna get in touch with him directly and find out what he would prefer, and then he's looking for some video cameras, we are gonna install those. So that is probably at this point the extent of the exterior work.
Lighting and signage?
Uh, lighting and, uh, cameras, not so much signage at this point.
Well, there's no one else in the audience, so I'm not gonna ask everybody has a question, else the chair can talk. Anybody on the board have any questions?
How do you, uh, how are you splitting this parking spaces that exist currently with the other two businesses?
Well, the, the parking.
How many do you require?
What's that, Mr. Brooks?
How many do you require?
Well, we have to review, the parking issue stalls are kind of a, uh, little on a difficult day. Additional project was approved nineteen ninety-five site plan and it required a hundred and nineteen stalls, which they did provide. Then in the night, um, nineteen ninety-nine, you changed the, the parking requirements. It was, it was initially one stall per a hundred and eighty square feet of that floor area, the original building met that, but when you changed the regulations in, uh, the zoning regulations in, uh, you know, in nineteen ninety-nine, became that plus one per employee. So the change in the zoning kind of made the parking non-conforming in that respect. Followed up in twenty fifteen where you, a site plan was approved by the town, which took seven spaces to put the bank kiosk in, they took seven spaces out. Currently, right now, there's a hundred and eleven parking spaces on the site from the original one nineteen. Myself, I went through the site today, uh, half the, half the parking spaces were occupied out of the hundred and eleven, I would, you know, I'd say about half, so.
Yeah, most of those are probably for Ready Med.
Uh, Ready Med certainly, the bank would, you know, Ready Med has longer hours, obviously to the bank, so, you know, bank closes, it's less, that demand, uh, disappears in the Ready Med and.
And you're not gonna, you may possibly in good weather, display motorcycles outside in some of those spots?
Apologize, what's that again?
In nice weather, did you say you might display some motorcycles outside?
We, yes, I mean, obviously being retail, we would, yeah, like to at least, you know, put, like, we do, we have three bikes outside our motorcycle store right now, so it would be nice just to get a little presence and, but they go in and out every night, security, things of that nature, so.
Would, would those be out in the parking lot or would they be under the overhang? Because if they're under the overhang, they don't take up any parking space.
Well, again, the Route two ninety, uh, is, is really what attracts us, you know, we're budding that, so we really wanna stay on that side of the building and, and, and get that exposure, so the bikes in, in our area would be nice, so.
Beautiful, thank you.
Is there a joining by remote? Can you please shut off your mic till you're called upon, please? Thank you.
Well, my, he's my plug.
Once again, if you're participating by remote, please turn off the mic to your, um, phone or your computer, please. You're interfering with the, uh, meeting. Um, do you have any more questions, Ron?
No.
Do you have any questions, Rakesh?
A couple of questions, I think one is maybe on the, one that Rachel identified, the, the license itself, does, so this, because you're selling motor vehicles, uh, or motorcycles, and then you're also repairing, you would need, um, the class one and class two. and then you're also repairing, you would need um, the class one and class two license?
Correct, through the slaughter.
So would that be essentially transferred to this location from Worcester, or would you apply for new ones?
We'd have to apply in the power plant for a new one. We can't swap between applying for a new one.
Okay, and, and Adam, is, is there a requirement for us to wait till we get, obtain the license? No, okay. And the second one, I think on the site plan, um, I'm a little, uh, I, I think I'm lost here, because there's less details uh, on the site plan. Is there a revision that is coming up on the site plan?
There, I'm sorry.
Is there a revised version of the site plan coming up?
Site plan, no.
No, okay. Cause I'm, I think as, um, um, so is it, is it all one level? What is the, the height of the structure?
It's one level.
One level, okay.
It's again, uh, TD Bank, yeah, it was initially a stable tier one, all, all one floor, and our second floor.
And so where would the, where would the maintenance portion of this, you know, of the vehicles be? Would it be on the backside of the-
We're, we're positioning it on the, on the two, Route two ninety uh, side of the building.
The back, the, isn't it the backside?
It's probably the occupancy, this is over the four mile plate.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, the front is on the bottom.
We can share one.
So, let me sit like this. Three brands of motorcycles?
Yes, three brands.
Well, I have to guess where your two top sellers are, the Indian and BMW, judged by the square footage. It's dedicated to them.
Good arm wrestling.
Do you have any questions, Ron?
One question, or one thing I wanted to say is, being that, you know, you'll have, it's currently Ready Med and the bank, which is a lot of walk-in traffic. They park usually in that center lane, maybe once in a while on the outskirts. I happened to be stopped in there today, and I, most, a lot of spaces were empty, but I, I don't know what you can do to school people or do something, or if there's something you can paint on the incoming lane that comes right up the side of the, where the people are crossing, and you're gonna have maybe motorcycles coming in a lot, and, you know, and there's gonna be a lot of foot traffic, just to avoid any accidents or anything like that. And I don't know if you can put something, crosshatch it or do something in there.
Probably do some type of striping.
Yeah, like you do at Home Depot, from the parking lot to the building, they got the big wide crosswalk, basically, whatever.
Oh, yeah, you could drive a truck through, yeah. It makes sense for everybody, absolutely. We, we could entertain that, like I said, uh, we, we don't-
You know, with the straight, when you come straight in, you're going right up between that left bank of parking spaces and, and the end. Thank you.
We'll adjust the plan, we'll pro- provide something on the plan.
How many employees are gonna be in this building?
It's, it's a little seasonal, obviously, in New England, uh, so, but we range from thirteen to seventeen employees.
Thirteen to seventeen?
Yeah. That includes part-time employees also.
And your hours usually from what, eight in the morning to five in the afternoon, or you open till nine at night, or?
Uh, usually have one late night a week, that's all. So, and it's, it's, it's actually nine to six right now, so.
John, one, one more question ahead. The access, the access for the, uh, so from this one, from this plan, um, the access for the vehicles is all coming in through the front? Is it all coming in through the front, or is there a backside access as well?
Well, we do, we do have the loading dock, which we will use, which will be, that's how, all the bikes will get into the store, and that will be for the retail customer coming in through the front.
Okay, okay. Yes.
This is all their service base.
Okay.
So probably, most of their stuff will probably come in this place. I would say most of your stuff will come in the, up near, uh, the mass bike site, you get the big glass overhead door.
Yeah.
It's really a service base, I'm sure they're wheeling it right there.
Would the backside then be used at all? Like the, the, um, the, the, the portion, you know, between the adjacent plot and, and your building? Would that be, okay? Okay.
Who takes care of the snow plowing for this lot?
Uh, currently, it's, it's New England Development owns the building.
They own the building?
New England Development owns the building.
I was wondering what they do with their snow storage. It must've been discussed with Ready Med and TD Bank.
I know, wow. Where is the snow storage, John, with them?
Well, they, they don't own the building, they're leasing, so the snow storage would be up to the original owner.
Okay.
So it's New England Development, so they plow, they, they must've had, when they built this building originally, what, twenty-five years ago? Anyway, they probably had all that sorted out, because nothing's changed there, other than the occupants.
Okay.
That's it, building's the same.
I don't think, they probably just push it up and use up some spaces.
Yeah, like here, here.
New England Development owns the mall, too.
Look at Simon's.
Not quite sure.
Yeah.
Look at Simon's that own the mall.
Hmm, I thought New England Development.
So, from the information you've given us, um, you have to go get your licenses and all that stuff, so, uh, if anybody doesn't have any objections, could I have a motion to approve them developing their business here?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your time.
Thought to close.
Oh, shit. Have a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. May I have a motion to approve the drawing as presented?
Uh, second. Oh, I'll make the motion, yeah, sorry.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
I had it written down, too.
Rich, do you know who, is it New England Development? Or is it Simon Properties?
Those of all.
Simon.
Okay, the next applicant is Todd, excuse me for saying this, if I say it wrong, Oster Kalawitz, Quality Contracting Incorporated requests the site plan approval under section nine point four, two point two point five point seven of the Auburn zoning bylaw for two general service commercial buildings with site improvements, a waiver for a landscape plan as requested at two eighty-two Southbridge Street, Auburn Mass, oh one five oh one, map twenty-five, parcel twenty-five. This has been continued from our seven twelve twenty-two meeting, and they've requested another continuance?
Yes, we got that peer review, Barry's back yesterday, so they want time to work on it.
So may I have a motion to continue?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. Next on the agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust, for a definitive subdivision plan for two lots, single-family home development, with a site improvements on property located at Claire Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn Mass, oh one five oh one. This has been continued from six twelve twenty-two. They have requested another continuance. May I have a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote. Uh, other business, is there any discussion or modification, Adam?
No.
Uh, decisions on nine Mark Street?
They signed.
Signed it. And then, uh, no new business, proceeding by me, so we have to come to the meeting minutes that Rachel so graciously gave us. I would like to have a motion to approve as amended.
I was absent until after the thing.
Oh, you can't even warn us.
You can, but if you wanna wait until the next meeting, you can.
You and I will go on a run, I'm not gonna hold up meeting minutes for that. Have a motion to approve meeting minutes as, as amended.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? Yes, I'll second. Ron, would you approve?
I approve.
I approve, it is a vote. I don't know if we actually have to do it for meeting minutes, you have to do it for something that was, that kind of plan. What do you think? I'm not sure about that.
I can check downstairs, check tomorrow.
So we have to, we'll, we'll, you know, we're already done. And may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Rakesh?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Reagan, is an aye. It is a vote, the meeting is now adjourned. Next meeting is nine thirteen twenty-two.